Night. Like to welcome everyone to the meeting of the Inksley City Council. This is a meeting for Monday, June the twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Call this meeting to order. Troy, if you could please play the Pledge of Allegiance. While we rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Deputy Clerk Malika Self, if you could please roll call please.
Councilman Williams, Councilwoman Washington.
Hold on, Malika. Malika, we have to get every person, each person has to say where they're at, so let's recognize them as they go.
Okay.
So start over.
Councilman Williams.
And Councilwoman Williams, well, he hasn't made it in yet. Go ahead to the next person.
Councilwoman Washington.
Here.
Councilwoman Watley.
And I see Councilwoman Wiley here. Councilwoman Wiley. Go to, go to the next person.
Yes, she may be. President reported virtually from my home in Inksley, Michigan County of Wayne.
Councilman Shaw.
I'm here, city of Inksley.
Mayor Pro Tim Kim Howard.
I don't know if we have some audio issues. Mayor Pro Tim Howard, we couldn't hear you. I think you faded in to fade it out. Yep, I heard, I, I heard.
I'm here virtually in my home in.
Okay, and Councilwoman Wiley, I see that you're here. Your mic is unmuted.
Right, I've been trying to answer. You can't hear me?
We can hear you now, ma'am.
Okay, I'm present and appearing remotely from my home in Inksley, Michigan County of Wayne.
All right, we do have a quorum. Approval of the agenda?
Oh.
Support.
It's been moved and properly supported. This self roll call please.
Councilman Williams.
And Councilwoman Williams is not with us as of yet.
Councilwoman Washington?
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley?
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kim Howard?
All right, motion carries. Brings us to the next point of the agenda for public hearing. Malika, if you can read into the record, please.
Virtual public hearing on lead service and water main replacement project.
What's your pleasure?
So moved, open up public hearing.
Sir support? Support. It's been moved and properly supported. Roll call please.
Councilwoman Washington?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, Councilwoman Watley?
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kim Howard?
All right, Mayor Pro Tim Howard, I don't know if, yeah, we're having some audio issues. Well, motion care. All right, good. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Bivins, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council to the viewing audience. Um, this app, this evening we come before you, as we, as we did last month, we presented the infrastructure on sewer and CSO. This month we're presenting the infrastructure on water and lead and copper. This is about replacing small water mains, six inches or less, as required by the state guidelines for us to apply for grant. We must hold a special council meeting, and this is the meeting of June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. At this time, I would turn it over to our engineer, Carrie Lloyd Smalley, and she will do the presentation. I ask that you hold questions after the presentation. Did you guys hear me? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council and attendees. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, thank you for being here this evening, again, on a day that would otherwise be a day off. I think that you'll agree after you, after my presentation, that these are important items that the city needs to address. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and get started. Here. With. Lead service and water main replacement projects. There are several already in progress. Okay, so the goal of this presentation is to show you, and the goal of the project itself, are to replace existing lead service lines where we know they are located. Uh, replacing, replace aging and undersized water mains. Um, and also with this presentation, it is a requirement to obtain funding. Um, and as you may already know, the funding would be in the form of low interest loans. I'm going to go through the background of the project similar to, um, my agenda is similar to what we went through for the CSO projects or the clean water state revolving funds, um, public hearing that we had about a month ago. Um, this is drinking water, uh, state revolving funds, and I'll go through the background, the need for the project. Uh, the analysis of two alternatives, the environmental impacts and mitigation of those two alternatives, the funding and a schedule. So we're starting off with a sketch or diagram of the water system, city of Inksley. Um, the different colors for each of the pipes show the different sizes of the pipes. In the city of Inksley, there are two inch through sixteen inch diameter water mains. And as you know, all of the water is supplied from the Great Lakes Water Authority. The three blue rectangles show the locations of the water meters or the master meters from Lewa. We get the majority or all of the water comes from right now from IK four and IK one. IK two has been turned off for several years, um, and the city is in the pro, in the process of opening that back up to provide a little more redundancy for the supply system to the city. The majority of the water comes through IK one located at, near the inner, or actually in the median of Michigan Avenue at Inksley Road in Michigan. About almost ninety percent of the water comes through that meter. In twenty nineteen, the city purchased seven hundred and forty-two point, or almost seven hundred and forty-three million gallons of water from Lewa. Water demands have steadily been decreasing over the years. As an example, in two thousand and six, the city purchased about nine hundred and seventy-two million gallons of water. So that's about a twenty, almost a twenty-five percent decrease, um, from two thousand and six to present. The system itself is composed of the water mains that I mentioned, twelve, or I'm sorry, two to sixteen inch water mains. There's about a hundred and four miles of them in total. Um, that includes line valves located at various locations throughout the system so that water mains can be isolated for maintenance purposes. Um, we're pretty, we're pretty confident in the number of line valves. Um, in twenty nineteen, the city did a main, they did a leak survey of all the mains, and in order to do the leak survey, they had to use those valves to determine the location of the mains, and they were mapped at that time. Same with the fire hydrants, there are nine hundred and fifty fire hydrants. The city performed, uh, flow. They flowed each of the nine hundred and fifty hydrants and also performed inspection of the hydrants. The service area or the population in the city is twenty-five thousand, four hundred, and that equates to about eight thousand, five hundred and eighty customers for water services and water meters for each customer. Of those eight thousand, five eighty, about three hundred and fifty of them are commercial, meaning they're probably a little bit larger meters and serve a little more water for those commercial locations. We anticipate the, the demand to go up maybe a little bit. SEMCOG uh, predictions indicate that the population isn't going to increase very much. It might go up and then it's expected to go back down to about what it is now, uh, based on their forecast. But we do think that the, there is a potential for the demand to increase, uh, based on some recent projects, mainly the marijuana grow sites that there are throughout the city. If those all get built, um, and they are concentrated in, you know, three or four locations in the city, we could see some demand increases in, for water. And we'll just keep our eye on, on the progress of those and how that pans out. Um, excuse me, went too far ahead. So want to mention the condition of the system. This is another map of the city with all of the water mains. Each of those purple boxes represent a location where hydrants were flowed and a flow test occurred to determine the amount of flow that would come out of a fire hydrant. Of course, mainly those, that flow would be for firefighting, but there are other occasional needs for flow from a fire hydrant for construction. The majority of the system is fifty to ninety years old, and we base those ages, we're pretty confident in those ages, not just because of record mapping, but because also fire hydrants have years stamped into them. And you can usually, um, if you don't have any records, you can usually assume that the main is about as old as the fire hydrant or the fire hydrants along there. Um, some of them have been replaced, but you can usually find the oldest one and assume that the water main is somewhere between those ages. Um, the other thing that's been occurring over the past couple of years is an increase in water main leaks. The city experienced a really high rate in twenty nineteen, which was almost twice what they experienced on a regular year. The city was pretty, um, proactive in locating those leaks. They had someone get out there and, um, sound, use equipment to locate leaks, and the city was able to repair them, or most of those that same year, um, and then address the more regular leaks that occur, or more manageable amount of leaks that occur in this past year, past pandemic year. The inspection and flowing of hydrants that I mentioned that occurred in the fall of twenty twenty identified about a hundred and sixty fire hydrants that are in need of repair and replacement. The majority of those actually need to be replaced, um, and some of them can be repaired. The hydrant flow test results indicated that the flow rates of those mains, the existing mains, is kind of on the lower end of the range that where fire hydrant flows should be. So, of course, want to increase that and get it into the more mid-range, if not the high range of flows that should be expected from a system of size. The other thing that was noted was the standard that the state recommends for water main diameters, um, which is eight inch as, at a minimum. And the city does have a few two inch and a few four inch, um, but there are lots of six inch mains throughout the city that are not only aged, but at a, a smaller substandard, um, for today's, um, standards. They're substandard. They weren't when they were, I'm sure they weren't when they were installed, but, but they are aging on top of being small. Um, so the other thing that I know the city council is well aware of is the fact that in twenty nineteen, um, through the routine water sampling that the city is required to do, there were a few actions that exceeded the, what they call the action level for lead in the water samples. Now, we know that the water that's delivered to the city is, um, within the safe range for lead levels. So we know that the majority of, or all of the lead that has been detected in these water samples is from fixtures in homes as well as, uh, service lines that supply from the main to the home. So one of the things among many that the city is required to do, once they exceed the action, the lead, um, action level, is to start replacing these service lines, and in order to replace them, uh, they need to identify the location of the mains that are led. I'm sorry, not the location of the mains, the locations of the services that serve customers. This map that's in this slide is colored. It shows properties color, different colors. Um, the plan is to, or the coding, the color coding indicates the fiscal year that the lead services are supposed to be replaced, and if the property is colored, that means there is either a known lead service or a likely lead service. Now, all of the communities in Michigan are required to provide an inventory of all lead services in their system by the year twenty twenty-five. Um, we've gotten a good head start on it. We've used all the records that we could come up with. Records that go back to the nineteen twenties when houses were built. Um, records as recent as, you know, the existing tax roll where we can find when structures were built. So the next process, or the next step in the process in the next couple of years will be to go out and start digging up some of these services to identify the actual, um, material where we can't make educated assumption as to what the material is. Um, so where we stand right now, we know we have eight thousand, five hundred and eighty customer service lines. We've been able to confirm that three hundred and twenty-four of those are confirmed lead services. Just under six hundred are likely lead services, and the likely is based on, you know, the neighborhood. If it's full of lead services and we don't have any information on this, we're assuming that it's lead also. The other thing that we can use is the age of the structure or, um, when we believe the structure was built, and that's what we use the tax rolls has a lot of that information. Um, we know that four thousand, almost five thousand are non-lead services. We were able to locate tap, water taps or records that indicate that copper services were installed. And then we have around, um, fifteen hundred that are likely not lead services based on the year the structures were built. And then, you know, around thirteen hundred that we just don't know that we're going to have to do further field investigation for. Another requirement, because when the city, or when the city reached the lead action level in twenty nineteen, one of the requirements was to replace seven percent of the total known lead services per year. And right now that number sits at sixty-seven. It's actually gone down a little bit, um, but the city chose to keep it at sixty-seven, um, to be conservative. And of course, you know, we want to serve our customers as well as we can. So I'm happy to say in, during, even in a pandemic year, the city of Inksley was able to replace sixty-seven lines, lead services, and that occurred in the, uh, northeast quadrant of the city, uh, where they were most concentrated. So just to run down a list of needs for the project, which would both be for the lead services and the water main replacement. Act three ninety-nine, which is a Michigan federal or drinking water act, um, requires the city of Inksley to be a good steward, steward of their water system. Part of that compliance is this eight inch minimum diameter water main size, um, as well as, uh, delivering clean drinking water, um, to all of its customers. So there are some legal issues. The lead service replay, replacement requirements was, as I just identified, several of those requirements that are necessary once the city reached the lead action level, um, deemed by the state. But there are also water quality issues. Um, those are mostly, obviously there's some associated with the lead replacement or the lead services. But in addition to that, there are also water quality issues whenever you have a water main break. Whenever there's a water main break, your water pressure may go down, and if water pressure goes down, that provides, um, opportunity for outside, materials outside of the water main to enter into the water main and into your water. And I know that people were asked to boil water, or the city had to issue a boil water warning to its community, um, as recently as, I think, January of twenty twenty. Projected needs of the city, we mentioned the demands that might increase, uh, but there's always that possibility that SEMCOGS, you know, projection of population, um, is off, and you could have more people in the city than expected, and your needs are going to go up. But certainly they aren't expected to go down. So we had two alternatives. Um, the first alternative is what we're doing currently, which is identifying lead services throughout the city and replacing them, um, at a minimum rate of sixty-seven services per year. And then we also have a water main replacement program, um, where we're replacing these smaller diameter mains, as well, I listed a few other items here, where that help us decide which water mains are going to get replaced. Obviously, whenever we have a roadway project going on, we want to make sure that all the utilities in that roadway are up to date and don't need any work on them so that we're not going back and cutting into, um, new pavement. There was a fire flow analysis done in twenty twelve, which identified a couple of locations, um, on middle belt, south of Michigan Avenue, that needed increased fire flow, as well as a couple of other locations. Um, I've already mentioned the standards for increasing pipe demands or pipeline diameters. And the other item that's been mentioned is eliminating dead ends. Whenever there's a pipe that is not connected and there's just usually a fire hydrant at the end, the only time the water in that pipe gets used is when the fire hydrant is opened. And, and right now that's a minimum of, or a maximum of one time a year. Um, while there's water sits too long, it gets stagnant, and the chlorine that keeps the water, um, fresh and, um, free of bacteria starts aging, um, and you don't want that. You want to be able to keep your water moving and keep it being consumed before it sits for too long. Um, and then, of course, we've selected lead service replacements based on their locations. It's, of course, most efficient for a contractor to come in and replace a bunch of lead services that are all closer in one neighborhood. It's quicker for them to do that, and because it's quicker and a shorter amount of time, the price is usually less than trying to do too many and too many other locations throughout the city. So the other alternative that we came with were coordinating water main replacement with lead service replacement. So that previous, um, map, I'll go back to it. The previous map shows some of the water mains shaded in colored areas. The colors correspond to the fiscal year that the mains are planned to be replaced. You'll see here, this long red length is in Abindale because Abindale is going to be reconstructed. So we're increasing that pipeline, um, based on some fire flow information. And then there's this area down here where there are four inch mains in the neighborhood, and this neighborhood is adjacent to some commercial area on middle belt where it was identified, um, increased fire flows are needed. Um, and then these other locations, this one shown in pink, and these shown in pink in the southern end are also four inch mains that need to be increased in size. And then there are some green areas where, again, we have, um, roadway construction scheduled in Abindale, and then mains that are small here just north of Michigan area, um, Avenue on Harriet and, um, River Drive. So in this map for the alternative, we're trying to coordinate lead services with the replacement of water mains. Um, and this does two things. It lowers the cost a little bit. It is a little bit over project by project, but if you look at it over a couple of fiscal years, it adds up. The other thing is, these properties that are shaded in blue are all properties that we believe or we know have lead services. So if we can look at water mains that need to be replaced, where there's a high concentration of lead services that need to be replaced, it makes sense to do it together, again, from a cost standpoint, and then also from an impact to your customer standpoint. Instead of replacing their lead services and waiting a few more years or vice versa, and coming back in a second time and interrupting their service again with a water main replacement, um, it makes sense to do it all together. And that also makes sense from an environmental mitigation standpoint as well. I'll go over that in a few minutes. But the criteria for replacement is all the same. Yet, we're just looking for high concentration of lead service replacement would be the only thing different. We still have roadway coordination, fire flow needs, increasing pipeline diameters where they're too small, and eliminating dead ends whenever we can. Um, I've shown a little bit farther, um, or I should say a couple of additional fiscal years out into the future, just to give you an idea of what would be in store, um, for re-coordinating and rescheduling some of the projects that are on the long list of, of pipelines that need to be replaced. Um, so here's an idea of how much money over three fiscal years, uh, the city might be able to save if they coordinate the project. It's around a million dollars, um, and you can see that the total linear fee, you're saving money and you're actually getting a little bit more done. Your, your total linear fee is a little higher. The approximate number of lead services is a little, is a little higher. The costs are, you know, a little, you know, the first year would be a little higher, but the future years would be a little lower. And overall, there is a pretty significant million dollars is, I think, a good savings for the city, um, by coordinating this work together. So all of the environmental impacts that we needed to look at in order to receive state revolving funds are listed here. We don't expect any significant impacts to any of these items listed here. The state will follow up in contacting the appropriate agencies to confirm that. Uh, there are a couple of locations that are closer to the lower branch of the Rouge than others, but all in all, uh, both projects have the same impact. It's just a matter of different times. We could argue that the impact would be lower with alternative two because we are only doing construction one year and getting everything out of the way, as opposed to, um, if we continue down the path we're on now and do lead services separate from water mains, we're interrupting or affecting any of these items twice. And that goes for short term, short-term mitigations associated with construction. There's noise, dust, traffic, and soil erosion or sedimentation control where materials during construction could end up in your storm drain and ultimately in the lower Rouge River. These mitigations would be the same for each of the projects. The type, I should say, the type of mitigation would be the same for each of the projects. However, as we mentioned, as I just mentioned, um, it would be one time for alternative two, but likely twice for alternative one. So noise would be mitigated by limiting the hours of construction for the ordinance. And if any requests were made outside of the hours of construction, there would be careful consideration to the time of year and the type of neighborhoods that it would be affecting, um, you know, commercial versus residential. Then dust, the contracts always include regular streets, street sweeping in the contracts, and if that wasn't adequate, there would, you could use the option of, um, watering, you know, having watering trucks out there and, um, spraying everything so that the material doesn't become airborne. So traffic, there's always going to be areas during construction that are inaccessible to regular traffic. So planned detours, um, and as much advanced notification as possible is always the best way to mitigate that. And then the soil erosion sedimentation control is something that the county will be monitoring because we need to get a permit from them. But basically, you're trying to keep all of that, uh, material, the, you know, whatever you're putting in or whatever you're taking out of the ground, out of your storm catch basins, um, and out of the creek. And that's usually done with filters, uh, putting a filter on a catch basin. It's like a geotextile textile fabric or putting up, uh, fences with that same geotextile. It's like a geotextile textile fabric or putting up fences with that same geotextile fabric so that. Water can flow through it, but dirt and mud and material can't. So, the funding, hopefully, for this project would come from the state revolving funds. They are low interest rates, we don't have those interest rates for the twenty twenty-two fiscal year when the loan would be requested. But we have the fiscal or the rates from previous years, Angster is. Identified as a disadvantaged community, so that forty-year term interest rate could possibly be offered. And all of these loans would be repaid with water and sewer fees that you recently passed. And those water and sewer fees included these revised projects. So, the schedule right now is that we need to get a document that was provided to you. Need to add all of this, all of today's information, a transcript of today's meeting and any questions that occurred today. To that document and get it to Eagle or the state by Thursday of this week. And then, we would begin design of the project in the first fiscal year. I don't know if you recall, but it would be the lead services and the water main located on North River. Then, once design is complete, we would obtain permits in order to bid the project in early spring of twenty twenty-two. And then begin construction in May of twenty twenty-two. So, the reason that we wouldn't start construction until next spring is because the city is required. To still replace sixty-seven lead services by the end of September of this year. And in order to build a water main, we need permits. And the county is experiencing a backup and the state is also somewhat as far as being able to approve. Permits. I believe it's due to COVID and just everyone's backed up, but what typically has taken, our experience recently has been. What typically takes, you know, three, maybe four weeks is taking almost twice as long. So, we didn't believe that we could get an approval in order to finish a water main design and do. Lead services with that water main before September thirtieth. And so, September thirtieth is the deadline for. Completing another replace, completing a replacement of another sixty-seven lead services. So, we would do the lead services and replace those in September and then immediately start on. This project that would also provide the city with a little bit of financial relief by doing them. Consecutively instead of concurrently. So, with that, if anyone has any questions, I would be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions from the body? Is there any questions from council?
Yes, Ms. Mayor.
All right, go ahead, Councilman Chisholm.
I was gonna ask, is this, you know, going line with what the president was talking about? Infrastructure plan and things of that nature. Anything comes out from the federal government, would this go towards paying the loan off? That'd be totally different infrastructure.
I don't know about the funding, but the infrastructure that's intended to be improved upon, this is in line with that, yes. The, how the funding and if you can get funding to repay the loan is, I think that's yet to be seen. I don't have the, you know, I can look into it and find out if there's information out there now, but I'm not aware of any yet.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Ms. Chair, I just, I just wanna request these, both of these presentations, I know that you did carry a fine job with the CSO. If we can get both of those present, PowerPoint presentations sent out to the council.
Yeah, absolutely.
Go ahead, Councilman Williams.
What is the projection, I, I know each year we indicated that we gotta do so much per year. What is the projection, how many years that we're talking about?
That's a great question, so right now, the lead services are projected to be completed. If we keep doing sixty-seven a year, they're projected to be completed, I wanna say by twenty thirty-seven. And the water service or the water main replacement, I think right now we have. Water mains identified all the way through twenty thirty-nine. And actually, the water mains through twenty thirty-nine do not include all the water. Include the majority of the six inch, but not quite all of them.
Answer your question, Councilwoman Williams?
Yes, yes, sir.
Any other question? Okay, here in none, this is a public hearing, so we would like to take questions regarding this particular project. From the public, Councilman Chisholm, if you can give them. Give the public. Instructions on how to.
Yep, for those who've joined us by the Zoom application or video, please use the raise hand feature to be recognized at this time. And those who may have joined us by telephone, please use the star nine feature to raise your hand to be recognized. For the public hearing regarding the. Presentation that just took place.
Good, Councilman Chisholm, I don't see none on my end, do you see any on your end?
Nope, I don't see any, nope, no hands.
All right, motion to close the public hearing.
No move.
Your support?
Support.
It's been moved and properly supported, any discussion on that? Hearing none. Deputy Clerk Self, roll call please.
Councilman Williams? Councilwoman Washington?
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley?
Okay, I didn't see her pop back up, next person?
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kim Howard?
Okay, I don't know what's going on with Councilwoman Watley, let's see if we can. Ask her to unmute. Okay, motion carries. Going into new business, Alika, if you can read that off, please.
Consideration and approval of resolution to adopt the lead service and water main replacement project. And it's selected alternative and designated Jerome Bivens as the project representative.
With your pleasure.
No move, Mr. Chair.
There's support?
Support.
It's been moved and properly supported, discussion. Hearing none, yourself, roll call please.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Washington?
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley?
I don't know what's going on with Councilwoman Wally, but next person please.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kim Howard?
Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, did you hear me say yes?
Yep, I got you, motion, motion care, motion carries. All right, then, moving into public participation. Brings us to a time of public participation for anyone that wants to address this body, we have one minute to do so. And Councilman Chisholm, if you can give them instructions again, please.
Yes, again, for those who have joined us by video or the Zoom application, please use the raise hand feature to be recognized at this time. For those who have dialed in by telephone, please use a star nine feature to raise your hand at this time. You have one minute to address this body, please state your name for the record once you are.
All right, Chair, recognize Charles Blackwell?
Hi, yes, my name is Charles Blackwell. I wanna state first that Councilman George Williams' water bill is two hundred and fifty dollars. And he has not made a payment in months and he should make a payment in light of the city's budget constraints. Secondly, Mayor Wimbley says that he has a seven hundred thousand dollar promissory note from Sweet Bee. He should cash it in to pay his three thousand dollars in delinquent taxes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Blackwell. Councilman Chisholm, I don't see any other hands for you?
I don't see another hands at this time either.
All right, any communications from Mayor and Council going around, Councilman Chisholm?
Yes, I was gonna say, in light of, I guess, what's going on and maybe in support of the president. I know we have a real big infrastructure problem in the city of Angster and I don't know if it would, you know, do anything but a good faith gesture to send, I guess, the White House a note. And tell them we are in dire need of funding for the infrastructure, replacement and repair of the infrastructure.
Yes, sir, Councilman Chisholm, you'll be pleased to know that I did have a conversation with Rashida Tlaib this afternoon. And we will be working in conjunction with Jewel Jones's office. As you will, of course, be a part of that and then Senator Betty Jean Alexander's office. To construct a letter from the city of Angster, of course, with us in support of a letter for just that.
Thank you.
You're welcome, do you have anything else, sir?
Oh, that's all I have.
All right, Councilman Williams?
I, I don't have anything right now, Mr. Mayor, but. I, I just wanted to make note, but my, my water bill is not behind, that's, that's my water bill ran that much for this month. So, you know, I think people need to get their facts straight, they come on here with all their clowning. You understand, my, my water bill is two hundred and fifty dollars, but it ain't even due yet. So, you know, I think that's dumbness on his part.
Hey, Councilman Williams, Councilwoman Wiley?
Uh, yes, sir.
Ma'am, do you have anything for us?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, Councilman Shaw?
Not at this time, it's Chair, I'll call you tomorrow.
All right, Councilwoman Washington?
Not at this time, thank you.
You're welcome. And Mayor Pro Tim Howard? Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, can you speak, you got probably just speaking to your mic a little bit because you're fading in and out.
Okay, can you hear me better now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just want to thank Carrie and Jerome and who else was on this project.
And ma'am, I truly apologize, I don't know if it's just me, but we heard you say thank Carrie and Jerome. And whoever else was on the project, but we didn't hear anything else after that.
Yes, I just, that's all I wanted to say, just thank you because I know it's some time and effort. And hopefully, once it starts. Your listeners will be happy.
Yes, ma'am, and I, and I just add to that, then, you know, this definitely will help us out. As relates to, you know, issues that we dealing with, with, you know, water pressure and of course, flooding. So, definitely wanna thank Mr. Bivens and his crew for everything they did over the time that we just had over Friday evening. And of course, PD and all of the first responders, so. Hearing, anything else, I think all minds are settled. Call for adjournment?
Most, I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Your support?
Support.
All right, all the favor signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, you guys have a good evening, thank you, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good work, Jerome, work, Carrie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.